All right. Let's call the order of February 23, 2023, regular meeting at Naperville Park District Board of Commissioners. The time is 6:30. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
What?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Which item of the roll, please?
President Gibson?
Here.
Vice President Ruffing?
Here.
Commissioner Anzier?
Here.
Commissioner Janner?
Here.
Commissioner McBroom?
Here.
Commissioner Todd?
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any matters from the public?
We do not.
Is there any consent agenda?
Item 3.1, approved January 2023 disbursements made through the Bank of America Purchasing Card Program in the amount of $285,943.38. 3.2, approved February 9, 2023, regular meeting minutes. 3.3, approved January 19, 2023 Executive Session Close Meeting Minutes. 3.4, approved February 9, 2023 Executive Session Close Meeting Minutes. 3.5, find that supply chain issues have made the procurement of transportation vehicles no longer adaptable to competitive bidding and to ratify and approve non-pro-tung. The action of the Executive Director in Purchasing 1, 2022 Ford F-350 XL Coupe Cab 4x4 from Roche Ford for $49,513. 3.6, find that supply chain issues have made the procurement of transportation vehicles no longer adaptable to competitive bidding and to ratify and approve non-pro-tung. The action of the Executive Director in Purchasing 1, 2022 Ford F-250 XL Coupe Cab 4x4 from Tipperary Riley Ford for $53,722.26. 3.7, reject the bid from Tails &amp; Style LLC during business as Tazza Construction for failure to submit a responsive bid and to award the contract for the administration building exterior door and window replacements project to Replacement Window Systems, Inc. in the amount of $262,521. 3.8, award the contract for installation of synthetic turf wheels at the Page River Sports Complex, Field 5, and not part of Field 5 Memorial Field to Field Turf USA, Inc. in the amount of $260,636.90. 3.9, approve Resolution 23-02 naming the golf practice facility at Naperville Golf Course, Marie Todd Practice Facility. 3.10, award the contract for installation of skate facility equipment for the Robinville Family Skate Facility Development Project at Centennial Park to Spawn Ranch, Inc. in the amount to $559,900. 3.11, approve change order number one for the Tall Grass Slate Playground Renovation Project. 3.12, substitute the cost of services schedule identified as Exhibit A of the Official Fiber Soccer Referees Services Agreement with a corrected version of the document. 3.13, award the contract for the 2023 t-shirt bid alternate number one to game day teamwork LLC in the amount of $3,204.
Thank you, Bujit. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda or considered separately? Let's move 3.9.
Commissioner Todd?
Any others?
Upstate.
President Gibson?
Yes.
Move to acceptance agenda items 3.1 through 3.8 and 3.10 through 3.13.
New business, administrative policy updates.
Yes, each year we conduct an annual review of our policies that are used through the
Second. Roll call, please.
district.
Vice President?
The first of which is going to be discussed tonight is our administrative policies.
Vice President Ruffing?
Yes.
Included in the weekly packet last week was a copy of the draft changes to those policies.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzier?
Yes.
Commissioner Janner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBroom?
A number of changes to help clarify the policies, clear up some of the wording, add in information
Yes.
Commissioner Todd?
Yes.
President Gibson?
Yes.
Move to approve consent agenda items 3.1 through 3.8 and 3.10 through 3.13.
for the upcoming Decennial Committee that will be formed later this spring.
Second. On favor?
And it also includes the addition of social media policy.
I got it.
Right. You have any?
Move to approve consent agenda item 3.9.
Prior to that, our social media policy had been all within the personnel policy updates, which we still have that within personnel as it relates to personnel use of social media. But this policy helps to clarify and fits better with the administrative.
Second. Discussion.
I want to stay focused on this item, that's all.
So we wanted to see if there were any questions from the board this evening. The intent is to gather feedback over the next couple of weeks, and then we'll bring
Well, I'd like to say that I'm really excited about this item.
the administrative policies back to the board for formal consideration on March 9.
I think it's a great recognition of Commissioner Todd's years of service, so I will enthusiastically
Does anybody have any questions about administrative policies?
be voting yes.
All right. Is it a voice vote?
No.
Financial policies. Roll call. Roll call, please. Vice?
Good evening.
Vice President Ruffing?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Similar to what Brad just had presented, you should have received all the finance policies,
Yes.
Commissioner Anzier?
Yes.
Commissioner Janner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBroom?
the draft policies in the last weekly packet. The majority of those items were cleanup in nature, and we had a couple changes, one in the purchasing policy. We're recommending changes to authority levels and some procedural changes, requiring new forms to be filled out for obtaining quotes. And then also, I should have said, the Finance Committee reviewed the policies at the January 31st meeting. All the other changes are fairly small in nature, so if you have any questions, you'd be happy to address those now. Approval would be also on March 9 for those policies.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stanis. And as you mentioned, Commissioner Ruffing, I would refund the updated financial policies. And just for clarity to the board, my answer was, my question was answered at our meeting. But the managers purchasing, going up from 500 to 2,500, you know, just for point of clarification for the rest of the board explaining, it just seems like a big, big jump. And was there a change in approval as well, or was it previously, prior approval without fact, or?
Right, so.
And then how many managers would have access?
So there's about 25 managers, we can start with that one, that fall under that level of, that have been under $500 for many, many years. We just, we did not update that level as we did with all the others. So over the years, as prices increased and as for efficiencies, we increased, you know, the executive directors to be in compliance with the new bid limit. Department directors were increased. We made a new level for some of our superintendents and the managers who do have a lot of responsibility. You know, they're running large budgets, they're handling cash, they have accountability. We've had them at 500, and today's world 500 is nothing. So in an effort to, you know, improve efficiencies, we wanted to just bump that up one time. We didn't want us, our recommendation is not to step it up and do another $500, another $1,000. We went to 2,500. And we did go out and surveyed some districts that are the size of ours, because, you know, we have a lot of transactions that run through, and the 2,500 to $1,000 is where we found most of them are.
And the managers, when we state managers, these are all full-time positions. The 20, there are actually, there's 26 positions that this would affect, all full-time. Some of these managers are responsible for very large budgets, as Director Stanish mentioned, one to $2 million budgets, responsible for 50-plus employees a year. So again, we saw this as something that has not been changed for over 20 years, that's been in place, and just with the increases in costs for goods, equipment, supplies, and the types of purchases that these managers are making, just to increase efficiencies here with that, with that change.
And I would mention too, as far as our internal control goes, we feel that even with this change, they're still very strong. Number one, you know, each one of us here operates under a culture of accountability and responsibility, and also before any bill is cut, the Finance Department is reviewing every purchase requisition that comes, comes through for the district. So there is another set of eyes that is reviewing everything, it's just not the department director that is then, you know, doing that approval for those moments.
The board still sees every, every purchase that there is, you know, every week, so it's not like, you know, anything is, is hidden. It's, it's just allows these things to go through a little bit quicker because of the change in approval.
Right. And, you know, there's even a second level that we added some years ago, that, you know, when paperwork comes through the Finance Department, we have our Suzanne, who does our accounts payable, is reviewing everything, and then either myself or accounting manager Jeremy Link goes through and does a review of her work against batches. So we're really two different people in finance are looking at all of those bills that are paid, aside from what's going on at the department level.
I appreciate that explanation. I'm fine with it.
I really appreciate the explanation. I am still uncomfortable with it. I recognize the need to increase these limits, especially as prices increase. We increased our executive directors spending limit 20%, but superintendents 100%. And then after 20 years of being stagnant at 500, to increase this 400%, it just seems like a big jump. And I think when we're talking our policies, it's a lot easier to make changes incrementally than to have to roll something back later. So I mean, if everybody else is comfortable with it, I wonder what's up.
Yeah, I think you have to look in light of the fact that we haven't done it for 20 years. And, you know, you're, what you're seeing is Muniter's having to come back time and time again with approvals at 500 apiece when so many prices have gone up. I think it, you know, if we had done it long in the 20 years, we probably would have been above at this level at this point in time. So it's sort of like a one-time correction.
Right, but if the approval process had been so cumbersome, it would have come up over the last 20 years.
Obviously it didn't.
Right, so I mean, I just, I, there's a need to balance oversight and time spent on approval versus policies that finances. I mean, I get it to balance, and everybody has different thresholds, I just prefer incremental.
And again, we're, we're looking at just increasing overall efficiencies within the financial policies and our overall procurement process. Certainly, this is why, and we have these discussions and want to present these policies to the board in advance, to be able to take a look at and to consider and ask questions. And there's certainly time, as we head towards the next meeting, that certainly if there's thoughts of a different threshold that the board would like staff to consider, we're open to hearing that.
Brad, so can you talk about the approval process as it is right now? So a manager wants to purchase something, what, how exactly does the approval process roll right now, so I can just determine how cumbersome?
Sure, so, you know, a manager would want to approve something under $500, they would purchase it, get, you know, they would do the approval, purchase it, do the PR, get the invoice, it will come directly to the Finance Department, and then we would review it, a check would get cut. Now, this isn't P card, this is just for purchase requisitions. If it's $600, they're doing that same thing, but then it's being routed to their department director, who then is reviewing it, signing off on it, and then forwarding it to the Finance Department. So that it's the level of approvals, it's still getting approved, it's just coming, the eyes are on that.
And the managers are also seeking permission from the supervisor prior to the purchase being made?
Yes.
So if there's a purchase of over $500, prior to that purchase, they're reaching out to the supervisor, waiting for approval to move forward with the purchase. Once they receive that approval, then there's the process of routing it to the supervisor for that second, second signature before it goes to finance. Based on the way that we're set up, and we're really a kind of a decentralized structure, where we've got supervisors, staff working out of multiple buildings, that means that it's traveling through inter-office mail, it's getting to another facility, getting that second signature before it's then going back to the administration building, to the finance office.
Is there an electronic best practice, just so it would speed it all up instead of physically?
Can I take that? We have looked at doing an automated purchasing system.
Right.
And the speed at which people are buying, it was more cumbersome to have to go through. So most of the purchasing systems do it where you set your money aside ahead of time, it gets routed through approvals. And so at that point, we're looking at modules, it just did not seem to make financial sense to do that.
Yeah, I'm with President Gibson on this one. It just, I mean, inflation is probably obnoxious, but not 400% obnoxious, so I would be inclined to go for something closer to 1,000.
Director Stanish, you had mentioned that you preferred not to do this incrementally, and I feel like probably some of the whys have already been discussed, but could you just quickly contextualize why you'd rather not do it incrementally? Sure, I mean, it comes with our recommendation, as, as, you know, Brad had just said, it's, that's why we're doing this, to discuss with the policies. It's just, it hasn't been done in so long, and we talked about this at staff levels a lot of times, and we said, well, we can just leave it. Finally got to a point where everyone's busy, and we thought if we're going to make a change, let's bring it up to where it would be had we been changing 500 or $1,000 a year.
I personally think it's a reasonable request to speed up the process here, especially taking something off of the director's plates. And I feel like if other districts our size are currently managing with this amount, I don't know with the amount of oversight that we have, the amount of eyes that we have on these purchases, why we wouldn't feel comfortable proceeding with this amount as well. It just seems like we're just trying to keep up with other districts of our size, and trying to make sure that our directors have all the tools and our managers have all the tools available to them. I just feel like it would free up a lot of time, and like you said, the efficiencies of it, just, personally for me, makes sense. So I see no problem in the amount. There, I mean, I think the other districts were between 1,000 and 2,500, so the level was on both spectrums. And also, I just don't know, we're comparing, you know, like 25, 26 managers of this level. I mean, I don't know if that's a comparable number of employees at that level to the comparable. It just seems like a lot of people to drastically increase spending level.
I think what, like Director Wilson said, we have time. I mean, if there was a board consensus and we wanted to compromise and look at a lower number, I don't know what that process would be, we'd make that recommendation, or, I don't know, hard line either way, I can see both sides of it, but if there was a board consensus, I would probably support a lower amount, like 1,500, I don't know what that number would be, but.
So what would be most helpful, staff consensus now, or time for people to email questions to Director Wilson?
You can certainly email questions to, to me, as well as, you know, as we lead into the, up to the next meeting. Gibson thought as to what, what you would be comfortable with, and certainly staff can go back and take a look at this policy and make a recommendation at the next meeting.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Next, we have personnel policy updates.
All right. Good evening. Like the administrative policies and the financial policies, personnel policies are subject to periodic review. We do these orally on an annual basis. It's a staff and legal review. Not to say that you don't receive policies for consideration outside of this process, but formally, everything is reviewed this timeframe of the year. So during the, in your weekly packet, you receive copies of six different revisions, different policies, and a memo that summarizes those changes. A lot of the changes are either corrections, kind of a clarification situation, also updating our nondiscretion anti-harassment policy to take the Crown Act into consideration. Also, the appendix that was updated regarding the employee benefits is going to be used as a future recruiting and retention tool. So are there any questions on any of the six policies that are presented in the weekly packet that will be coming to you at the March meeting for approval?
I don't have any direct questions, but I just did want to say that since we've seen the drafts that, you know, with the regards to Crown Act information, using for the, you know, municipal programs, and overall, I just want to, I appreciate those changes. I know we're still, you know, a lot of organizations that the district included are working towards really improving our diversity and inclusion initiatives, and this may seem like a small thing, but it's definitely an important thing, so I just want to say we appreciate that and, you know, look forward to further things like this. Thank you.
Katie, on the social media policy, you know, I think, obviously, we're walking a line here between individual liberty and freedom of the employee versus protecting the district, and I think in the first paragraph, the part that's more significant is if you choose to identify yourself as a Naperville Park District employee, that's when a lot of this is triggered. So if, if a person is an employee, but they don't on their own social media platform identify themselves as a Naperville Park District employee, they just put their name and that type of thing, is, just want to get some color commentary, is all this kind of off the table? In those cases, are we only really talking about if someone identifies themselves on their Facebook or Instagram or whatever as a Naperville Park District employee, and if they don't, then a lot of this doesn't apply?
Yep, that's where the First Amendment and social media policies are. I mean, we're not allowed to control what people say about their own viewpoints on any particular issue, provided they don't try and link it to their services of loyalty to the market. Now, the link can be, and the case law has been as much as, currently employed at Naperville Park District is on the about exception, and then they say something controversial like "The Mandalorian sucks," that's going to be a problem?
Of course, that's a must-have.
Thank you.
Any additional question? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Professional services for Naperville Golf Course renovations.
Good evening. Park District staff will be providing for the board's consideration next month a contract with Martin Design Partnership for professional services for course updates and renovations at Naperville Golf Course. The scope of the professional services include construction phase work for the #18 Green relocation project scheduled for this summer, as well as completion of design development, civil engineering permitting, construction documents, and bid phase services for future renovations down at Naperville Golf Course. The construction schedule for the Naperville Golf Course renovation work will be terminated later this year. This contract will continue work previously completed on these projects by Martin Design, and staff is recommending a new contract with Martin Design based off previous experience with this firm, including a successful design and development of the recent Springer Golf Course renovation, which was recently completed on time and under budget. Also, the Martin Design team retains intellectual capital about how previous Naperville Park District golf course improvement projects were designed and constructed, including services previously completed on the aforementioned Naperville projects. The fee for the scope of work totals not to exceed an amount of $166,400, and is based on and within professional services pricing and contracts negotiated earlier with this firm for similar projects. The funds for these services will be coming from the 2023 golf capital budget. Be happy to answer any questions if there is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Microsoft Enterprise Licensing Agreement.
So every year, the biggest item that comes from IT to the board is our Microsoft licensing agreement. You know, it covers Office, Windows servers, our desktop licensing. Now, with our transition to Office 365, there's the addition of those licenses into this as well. This is year two of a three-year agreement, which is provided through DAPL, through a joint person contract with the State of Illinois Department of Innovation and Technology. And this agreement was approved by the board at the June 9, 2022 meeting. Part of this process, along with our standing licenses, is an annual process of assessing our existing technology. If there's any adjustments to the traditional licensing that needs to be added to that as well, to keep us in compliance. So with that, along with the year-two payment at the next board meeting, we'll also be bringing additions for some of that true-up process, that addition, as well as our Office 365 licensing, which is a new item being added to that this year. Have any answer, any questions?
Thank you. AI website accessibility tool.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about our AI-powered web accessibility tool, and you may want to reference this handout, I think it's in each of your places. So earlier this month, at the February 9 Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, I introduced this tool and gave a brief demonstration about it, and I wanted to bring it back to the full board and just to be able to talk a little bit more about that. So the tool was rolled out in January by the firm that we used for our website redesign, which is PureI. And we implemented the tool earlier this month, because we really felt it was a great idea and opportunity for us to take our website, which was already designed with the website accessibility guidelines as part of it, but then this was an opportunity to really kind of enhance it and take it to the next level as far as accessibility is concerned. So because it's subscription-based, we do have an annual contract, so what that does and it allows, as things change in the accessibility space, we get automatic updates to that. So we're able to make sure that we're consistent and current with anything that may change with regard to that. So it's designed to provide enhanced accessibility and is customizable based on an individual user's needs. So if you, first of all, you take a look at this first page, and in the bottom right-hand corner, there's the blue icon, you see the red arrow pointing to it. So as a user, you go to our website, and that's on every page. So you just look at the lower right-hand corner, you click on it, and then if you flip to the next page, you'll see that each of these boxes is numbered. So you start here at the top, 1, 2, 3, and 4, so that's, it's continuous scrolling. So if you're on the website, you're scrolling down, and you can see all of these different options that are available to change everything from the color, the way the website is formatted. There are certain boxes that if you need to be able to focus in on a certain area, if you have ADHD or whatever it is, you're able to find those tools that help you address any kind of needs that you may have in navigating the website. So it's been a really nice enhancement. On a related note, we did augment our district accessibility guidelines, and that's the third page. So you can see our accessibility and inclusion information is here, and it does include the website information. So it has an overview of what that's about, what that icon is on the homepage, and why that's important. So I invite you to try the accessibility tool when you have a chance, if you haven't already done so. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty cool, and it's nice to know that we've been able to enhance users' accessibility with the website. Lastly, and I wanted to mention this, because I think this is just, it just shows that we're being very responsive to the community. We did hear from a member of Naperville Accessible Community Task Force, who commended us on implementing this tool, and also commended us on our revamped accessibility statement on the website. So kudos to Park District.
To you and to staff, this is great.
I did take a look at this tool, and I felt the, the amount of.
an opportunity for us to take our website, which was already designed with the website accessibility guidelines as part of it. But then this was the opportunity to really kind of enhance it and take it to the next level as far as accessibility is concerned. So because it's subscription-based, we do have an annual contract. So what that does and it allows, as things change in the accessibility space, we get automatic updates to that. So we're able to make sure that we're consistent and current with anything that may change with regard to that. So it's designed to provide enhanced accessibility and is customizable based on an individual user's needs. So if you, first of all, if you take a look at this first page, and in the bottom right-hand corner, there's the blue icon. You see the red arrow pointing to it. So as a user, you go to our website and that's on every page. So you just look at the lower right-hand corner, you click on it. And then if you flip to the next page, you'll see that each of these boxes is numbered. So you start here at the top, one, two, three, and four. It's, it's continuous scrolling. So if you're on the website, you're scrolling down and you can see all of these different options that are available to change everything from the color, the way the website is formatted. There are certain boxes that if you need to be able to focus in on a certain area, if you have ADHD or whatever it is, you're able to find those tools that help you address any kind of needs that you may have in navigating the website. So it's been a really nice enhancement. On a related note, we did augment our district accessibility guidelines. And that's the third page. So you can see our accessibility and inclusion information is here. And it does include the website information. So it has an overview of what that's about, what that icon is on the homepage and why that's important. So I invite you to try the accessibility tool when you have a chance, if you haven't already done so. It's, it's pretty neat. It's pretty cool. And it's nice to know that we've been able to enhance users' accessibility with the website. Lastly, and I wanted to mention this because I think this is just, it just shows that we're being very responsive to the community. We did hear from a member of Naperville Accessible Community Task Force, who commended us on implementing this tool and also commended us on our revamped accessibility statement on the website. So kudos to Park District.
To you and to staff. This is great.
I did take a look at this tool and I thought the amount of adjustments that you can make were really amazing.
It is.
So it's a really good find and addition to our, I think, our program guidance.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is there any way at, like, just, I guess, in general, how is the feedback? Any way to kind of collect feedback on how people are using it, how well it's working, just over time?
Sure. We can look at ways of doing that. And we're always interested, obviously, in finding out if our users find what we're putting out there helpful. Hopefully, they do. And what we'll also be able to do too, now that we've had the website up and running for a couple of months, we're starting to take a look at the analytics and being able to compare to our previous website. So that can be part of our comparison to trying to see who takes advantage of that and then looking at feedback and trying to get some, find some users and find out if they found it helpful. All right. Thank you.
Declaration of surplus property.
Hello, everyone. I want to share with the board our intent to bring a declaration of surplus property agenda item to the March 9 Park Board meeting and also present the topic this evening for discussion. A preliminary list of items was provided in the February 17 weekly packet. We will be seeking approval to recycle, trade, or discard the listed equipment and property, including several items from Fleet and the Gulf, IT and Recreation Departments, no longer needed for park purposes as per Illinois Park District Code. If you have an answer, any questions, if there are any?
That list is kind of like a garage sale on paper. It's unbelievable. Question is, what, how do you set the pricing when you post something on Gov Deals? Do they recommend the price or do we recommend the price?
It's set by staff. They'll usually do a little bit of research and see kind of what the going rate is for a lot of similar type items. And time to list the reserve, so we make sure that we're accounting to reach a minimal amount. And if we don't hit that amount, then we'll reevaluate and relist.
And so on the Gov Deals, they have never used that? Does someone, does someone just bid on it? If you posted at $100 and someone bid $90, or how does that?
That's correct. So, yeah. The reserve is often listed if you visit the website. And if not, it's, it's just like an eBay where you could keep bumping up the bids.
So the list price is not as important because someone's going to bid, they want to bid?
Correct. And then if we don't hit that amount, like I said, we'll, we'll hit that deadline and then reevaluate and see if we need to change the price of this thing.
Thank you.
Is Gov Deals open to the public? Is that something anybody can go on and buy?
Yes.
And then some of these items that are not listed, at least on the thing that's saying Gov Deals per se, like it says sell slash recycle, does that mean it goes on another site or?
Typically, we've just utilized Gov Deals. You know, it gives us the option, if it is junk, then we will discard it or recycle it. The option to trade, like a vehicle, for example, has also existed in the past, though we've determined that we've, you know, more frequently received better pricing through a lot of the Gov Deal options versus the trade-in options.
Okay. So then some of these are, this is a silly question. Some of these, like, these serving pans and pine glasses and things like that.
Pine glass?
I believe so. Not saying so to me, but like, if those don't go up, you put all those on Gov Deals too and people can buy it. And if not, you just discard it or recycle it somewhere.
Right. Or, you know, we've donated items as well. You know, a lot of the items have been actually reused within the district. They might come from another department. And then we'll reach out. I know a lot of those kitchen items were actually, I believe, made their way to our golf courses. So we'll try to find out how best we can.
There are a lot of, I see the top of this is like Gov Deals slash recycle. And then the bottom has a lot of recycle. It's like iPads and stuff. Are those just so old that we don't expect them to get anything off of Gov Deals?
Right. And actually, we were just having that conversation before the meeting. A lot of those are older generation items. And either they don't work or there's not much value in trying to sell them anymore. And we will do a lot of electronics recycling as much as we can.
They're probably not just thrown.
I just have a quick question. The sell slash donate items, will you list all of those to sell first? Or do you guys go through and kind of just, because I'm, sorry, I'm turning literally myself off. Just I'm speaking. Because it's like I'm looking at this list of all these kitchens. It, I feel like there's so many nonprofits in our area that could use those. And if it's not going to give us a whole lot of money, it seems like it would be a good chance to pay it forward, if you will.
Yes. So we'll look through the list. And those that are really more of the higher value items, we will look to sell through Gov Deals. But then the other items, we would look to donate. And we have worked with groups in the past to donate some of the items that we no longer need.
Any other questions? Thanks. Are you fertilizer?
I am. Another exciting topic. I think it's Marie's favorite. So also at the March 9 board meeting, we plan on seeking approval to award our annual fertilizer for park services and golf bid. An advertisement for bid was posted on January 27th with 16 project manuals delivered to vendors. Vendors were allowed to submit bids for a maximum of two products per fertilizer blend, which is weight, which is why you may have noticed the A and B options listed in the weekly packet memo. And this is to allow the district to consider other options that were similar, but not exact to those we specified in the project manual. Four sealed bids were received. And based on an initial evaluation of the submissions, we anticipate recommending the contract be awarded to Conserve FS. And these fertilizer purchases will be funded with the combined 2023 Parks and Golf operations budgets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Playground.
Yes. Good evening. So the first one related to Timber Creek Park and Willow Way Commons Playground Innovation Play Equipment Purchase Order. Purchase orders to secure a play equipment for Timber Creek Park and Willow Way Commons Playground Innovation projects are anticipated to be presented to the Park Board for authorization in March. The Park District has an opportunity to contract directly with product manufacturers through corporate purchasing networks based on competitive pricing already set for products and services. This approach will assist with expediting delivery timeframes for equipment. Last December, as you may recall, residents completed play equipment surveys and the results helped select the future play equipment. Staff will publicly bid the construction portions of the playground renovation projects. And these selected contractors will take delivery and install play equipment. Construction contracts for the Timber Creek Park and Willow Way Commons Playground renovations, as well as a contract for the Willow Way Commons Port and Play surfacing installation will be presented for approval at future meetings. Just an update on that topic. A purchase order to secure the Frank J. Russ Pavilion and store shelter for the improvements project planned at Knott Mills Park this year is anticipated to be presented to the Park Board for authorization in March. The approach will assist in expediting delivery timeframes for the pavilion and store shelter. Staff will also publicly bid the general construction portion of this project, installation, site improvements project. And the selected contractor will take delivery and install the pavilion and store shelter. This project is slated to commence this summer with the intent to reach substantial completion in fall.
Thank you. Ranview Park Tennis Courts.
A contract for this project is planned to also be presented to the Park Board for approval in March. The scope of work includes removal of the existing color coding system on the West tennis courts. Surface preparation and application of a new color coding system is strapping. The Park District last resurfaced these tennis courts in 2015 and the courts are in need of new color coding system is driving at this time. Also, it's important to mention that an alternate is included in the bid for resurfacing of the East tennis courts. The East tennis courts at Rantry Park have been closed since summer of 2020 with deterioration of the concrete roof of the underlying, or the concrete base, I should say, of the city of Naperville Water Reservoir was observed. The city of Naperville has since been working with this, with their own contractors on concrete repairs. The city's contractors may perform the tennis court color coding and striping scope on the East tennis courts. So that's why we're listing it as an alternate for consideration. Pending contract approval, it is anticipated that work will be completed and all tennis courts reopen in summer of 2023. It's also important to mention that when this work is completed, that there's three Eastern tennis courts and three Western tennis courts at Rantry Park. Is that the intent is that once the three Eastern are completed, then we'll start the Western. We're not going to take them both offline at the same time. So there's always going to be courts for the public to use at this site.
These ones can't be used right now, right?
There's, the three Eastern are currently closed.
Right.
Yeah. They're under construction. And the intent is to have those with the new color coding completed. The city's contractors doing the concrete, we do our color coding. And then once that's complete, the public can use that. Then we'll shut down the three Western courts and then renovate that and reopen that to the public.
And are these strike just for tennis or are they also strike pickleball and state?
Yeah. In past years, we also have been adding striping for pickleball Rantry. And then patrons could bring their own nets until they have the ability. So that's very popular at that site, as we know pickleball. Wherever we look throughout the community, there's a lot of interest in that activity.
So it's currently pickleball, no state pickleball, or strike for pickleball as well?
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's the intent at this time.
Okay. Keep me saying. Okay. Great. Any other questions? Thank you. Synt property, if that's your place.
A contract for this project is planned to be presented to the Park Board for approval in March as well. The scope of work includes removal and replacement of existing perimeter fence and gates around the Synt property. Some sections of fence have been replaced in recent years and those sections will remain. The Synt property is situated adjacent to Section 1 of the Riverwalk and serves as an integral point of storage and staging for the Riverwalk and Parks North maintenance operations. In order to ensure security of the perimeter of the property, replacement of fence is needed at this time. Pending contract approval, it is anticipated that work will be completed in spring of 2023.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. And we've got 2023 included.
Good evening. The district has solicited vendors for the RFP process for the procurement of food, groceries, snack, and related kitchen and food supplies to support our food and beverage operations here at the district. The RFP was sent to four vendors and three other vendors requested a copy. The deadline for submission was last week and we received one proposal from Gordon Fleet Service, which is mostly known by GFS. The district has worked with GFS for the last several years and has had a very positive working experience. The ability to shop at the local GFS store and receive the contract pricing is one of the biggest benefits of working with GFS. Staff will be recommending at the next board meeting to enter into another three-year agreement with GFS.
You want, you want to just buy off Tim's garage sale of kitchen supplies and install the whole thing?
There you go.
Thank you. That's it for new business, I believe. So the next regular meeting with the Park Board Commissioners is March 9, 2023, 7:00 PM at Fort Hill Elementary Center. We do not have a central session.
Move to adjourn to the February 23, 2023 regular meeting at 7:12 PM.
Over, please. Okay. Voice but all in favor? All right. See everybody.